At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, regular scheduled meeting of the Aridale County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask you to reflect on the last three weeks. Had two events, tragic events, in New York City as well as in southeastern Texas. Just keep those folks, those communities in your prayers and as well, the continued recovery efforts in Puerto Rico, Florida, and Texas, and the Gulf Coast, from hurricanes, as well as out west in California in the fires. So, a lot of communities are hurting and we need to, I'd ask you to reflect on that and lift them up. So, if you please bow your heads in silent prayer or reflection. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everyone to a little bit longer than normal interval between our meetings. This past interval was three weeks instead of two. It seems like months since we've met.
Months since I've been here.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Smith, would you please run down any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we have two adjustments. Under closed session, we had, in our pre-agenda meeting, we went into closed session for economic development, and that's 143-318, 11A4. And I add that because there is action that needs to be taken in open session. And under administrative matters, I'd like to add 8.12, and this has to do with a resolution for Project Victory and dealing with a building reuse grant.
Any further adjustments to the agenda as outlined by Mr. Smith? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We don't have any special recognitions to present this evening on behalf of the board, but I would like to give a shout out and to a couple of our employees from our emergency communications department. Bill Jeter, who was named by the North Carolina Association, North Carolina APOC, which deals with ECOMs, has honored Bill Jeter as the Line Supervisor of the Year. And in addition, Todd Craddock was named the Information Technologist of the Year. And that's a great honor and recognizes the tremendous work that they've done in terms of taking our communications capabilities to the next level and preparing us to move our entire communications department into the new public safety building, which, by the way, last week, we had a groundbreaking ceremony for. And we're hoping to be able to dedicate that facility in December and to be able to fully occupy it with ECOM within about six months after that, EMS moving in, and the Fire Marshal's Office and our emergency management personnel. So, I want to thank the entire staff, from finance to our engineering staff and all those others who have worked so diligently, particularly David Salibi, to bring to fruition from a vision to a reality, that entire public safety building, which will pull all of our ECOM, EMS, and Fire Marshal activities under one roof. And all of those folks execute their missions in service of the people of this county, shoulder to shoulder, as a team of teams. And this building will reflect, I think, that function will be enhanced by being able to work together as departments on a day-to-day basis at the very senior levels. So, thank you again for all the work that's gone into that process. At this time, we have, to kick things off, an appointment before the board. It's a request from Partners Behavioral Health for some assistance to Fifth Street Ministries. And we have with us today, Dr. Jeffrey Eads, from Partners, who will be able to share with us the situation that Fifth Street finds itself in as it relates to providing services to our homeless population.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager Smith. I'm bringing to the board tonight a request on behalf of Partners Behavioral Health in regards to a homeless outreach program currently being delivered by Fifth Street Ministries. The program is known as the Projects for Assistance in Transition from Homelessness, or PATH for short. Fifth Street has been operating this program since 2002, and most recently, it's been funded utilizing a blended funding mechanism, which was in part federal funding that flows through the state to Partners, which we then divvy out to the provider, as well as dollars that we allocate from the county dollars given to us by Aridale County to manage. At the end of last fiscal year, we were notified that the $153,176.85 in federal funding that typically goes to Fifth Street to administer this program was not going to be allocated for this fiscal year, and that they were not going to be one of the selected sites. Since that time, we've been working with Fifth Street as they're to transition that program to a newer program where they could utilize billing against Medicaid to be able to provide a similar type service to continue this outreach to the homeless community. At this time, they hope to be up and running to be able to start delivering the billable services by July 1 of 2018. In the interim, I'm requesting no new money on behalf of the provider, but to be able to utilize dollars from the fund balance that we've developed over a number of years in county dollars to offset the $153,176.85 that was lost due to the cut in the federal funding. So, I'm bringing that before the board tonight for consideration, so I'll go ahead and take questions on that.
Are there any comments or questions?
Dr. Eads, as we went over downstairs in our pre-agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, so the $153,176.85 was actually allocated from the federal to the state? And then the state chose amongst themselves to reallocate it elsewhere other than to give it to Aridale County where it was intended to go, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So, what my main concern is here, this program is vital. These programs provide a very much-needed service, but my concern to this board and what we are going to try to do, our discussions, so you citizens can understand in the media, is we're going to reach out to our federal and state partners to make sure that funds that are allocated and spearheaded to Aridale County need to end up here also. It's another reallocation of money that Aridale County taxpayers was receiving in return for their federal and state tax dollars that's been paid by our citizens, and somebody, some other bureaucrat in Raleigh decided to reallocate that somewhere else. So, we appreciate what you do, and we'll do our due diligence to find out where it went and why it went somewhere else.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Eads, didn't you say that it went to Mecklenburg and Guilford? Were the two that received funding from us to them, or where did it go to?
The two that I was told were Mecklenburg and Durham, not Guilford.
Mecklenburg and Durham.
Yeah.
Their homeless are more important than our homeless, is basically what happened.
Make sure Fifth Street knows, and you guys know that we appreciate what you do. We appreciate the importance of the people this is treating, the mental health illness issues. A lot of these issues are serious, and this type of program has benefited a lot of people in a lot of good ways. So, we want people to understand, you know, that we don't want to pick up the slack and allow them to think that we're going to annually do this from now on, even though we do recognize we're trying to bridge the gap this year and try to put the due diligence pressure back on them to reallocate and refund this program as it was already done, because it was benefiting our citizens in a great way, that needed, a much-needed service.
Yes, sir. And just to make sure I'm clear on it, we are not asking for the county to sustain this program long-term, and that is not the expectation of the provider or Partners, that this would be ongoing funding to offset that. It would just be a transitional period.
Right.
But thank you for your support in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Eads, that $153,000, that's coming from your fund balance, basically from your savings.
That's correct, sir. That would be the county dollars that Aridale has allocated to us over the years. We've managed to manage that well and been able to set some back, so it would not be a request for new dollars. It would just be seeking permission to utilize, because it is at your discretion how we utilize that fund balance to support this program.
Thank you, sir.
And this program basically assists folks that are challenged, being homeless, to be able to develop life skills and transition to transitional housing, get jobs, and then be able to support themselves. Is that correct?
That is correct. It does all of the above that you mentioned. When this team comes into contact with folks that are, it is voluntary that they participate, there's always a goal right away for permanent housing, but oftentimes transitional housing is a really good option for people. But there's a big emphasis on learning life skills, and if employment is an issue, to help folks with those things, and to also offer them ways to get laundry done, get them to appointments, all of those types of things.
It also has a mental illness aspect that they deal with, because if this program wasn't in place, from my perspective, from a law enforcement background, you're going to, if people aren't getting the help they need, your potential of them committing crimes or being in a community homeless, not getting help that they've been getting, can only lead to crimes in our communities, and these people getting, you know, their situations getting worse, their health getting worse, they could potentially not get the medications they need, the counseling they need, and commit crimes and things against citizens that they otherwise wouldn't be doing, because they're reaching out voluntarily now to get that help. So, that's what concerns us as well.
Yes, sir. They currently serve several high-risk groups that include those with mental illness, substance use disorders, also traumatic brain injury, as well as those with developmental and/or physical disabilities. So, they do reach out to all those vulnerable, high-risk groups.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Eads, you will continue to work with Fifth Street Ministries to try and help them out with Medicaid?
Yes, sir. That is part of Partners' plan with Fifth Street, is to help them and offer technical assistance to get them, because that is a transition, to go from being grant-funded to being able to navigate what it is to be a provider that's billing those services, learning the billing codes, learning new computer systems. It's getting a lot of things up to speed, so it's going to, we're going to have to be very diligent and work hard to get them there.
Is this something that would be processed through NCFAST?
It would be more on our side with that than theirs. They would be billing us for those services, and then we would be doing the reimbursement to them directly.
All right. Any further discussion, further questions? I entertain a motion to approve the request or deny it, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Norman to approve the request by Partners Behavioral Health for financial assistance to Fifth Street Ministries to appropriate $157,000. Where was it?
Fifty-three.
One fifty-three, okay. One fifty-three up to 153,176.85 from their current fund balance. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eads.
Thank you very much.
The next appointment we have before the board is a request by Peter Heimow to address the board.
I want to thank you very much for allowing me to come here tonight. I'm from Love Valley. Some of you may know me from a column I write called "Life in the Valley" for the Estatesville paper. I'm here to discuss two things. The first one I'm going to go over quickly. On January 18th, at the Estatesville Civic Center, I have organized a luncheon that's going to deal with the tier-three aspects of our county. It's a bad thing that affects us in a bad way. And as you all know, Love Valley has some problems with our infrastructure, and we need funding. But because of the tier-three, a lot of that funding is not available. So, that being said, we're having a luncheon. My keynote speaker will be Representative Rena Turner, and she'll be discussing this subject in depth, and also discussing a new task force, financial task force, that she is a part of, that's going to help to address this problem in a much more positive manner than it has been addressed. And I'm hoping that some of you gentlemen will attend, and other people in the community. There will be 200 attendees at this luncheon, and the tickets will be available Friday, and they may be purchased. Two tickets for $100. The money that is left over from this will be going to the Crosby Scholarship Foundation in Aridale County, which I think everybody is in pretty much agreement. That's a wonderful foundation. Secondly, I want to state that I do not represent my town council, nor am I a politician there. I'm just a citizen. But with that being said, I believe in my heart that citizens matter. And there's a lot of other people that feel that way, and I have to admit that I wrote this letter, so excuse my vernacular in it, but it's signed by 250 people, and it is not a petition. It is merely a sampling. And I can say in all good faith that probably 220 of these are valid signatures that actually read it. But 98% of the people I talked to signed this, including, I would say, a quorum of our town government. The letter goes as follows: "To the County Commissioners of Aridale County, North Carolina. The people who have signed this document represent a significant number of full-time, part-time, as well as guests, who visit this community. The reason for this letter is to signify the appreciation that is felt by the residents and visitors alike for the work the county commissioners and other county staff, such as the Sheriff's Department, do for the town of Love Valley. With that being said, we would like to offer our cooperation and assistance in helping Aridale County help us, as the members of the town and county, to better come into compliance with the initiatives and laws of county and state objectives. It is our goal that the people of Love Valley and the county government may come together to fortify our bond and pull together to find solutions to some of the infrastructure issues we are dealing with, such as an up-to-date sewer system that will be of benefit to all the people who enjoy the town. We feel that North Aridale County is a valuable asset to the county. Many people come here from all over the world, and the impact of these deaths is made financially tangible to the businesses in and around this community. The county has done an absolutely wonderful job in developing the southern part of the county with special respects to the Lake Norman community. It is our hope and in our prayers that you will help us realize the full potential of a unique equestrian community, so we may have a positive impact in our county in a like manner as our southern neighbors do." And I think what we're really asking you is another shot at getting together as a town and a county to work on this problem we have. In all fairness, I'm looking upon the council here, and I don't know if I've ever seen any of you come up there to a function, and I'm deeply involved in a lot of the functions, and that's fair, because I think you can honestly say that there aren't many town members that have attended your meetings. And I think it's something that could be straightened out, and I am respectfully requesting you to consider putting together a subcommittee in coalition with our town, some of our politicians and some of our residents, to form a discovery group to help us find solutions to this problem. My biggest hopes are that the county may come up with some funding to help us, but during this process, perhaps a private individual, a philanthropist, or a corporation will come on board to help us, as they have done with other things in the county. I would hope that you would entertain the thoughts of making a motion in that. One thing I will say in closing, the Love Valley Public Lands has taken the arena around in the past five years to a very workable solution. The hearts of Love Valley and the Mule Association do a lot of great programming for the youth, such as fun rides and youth rodeos, from all over this area. John Ring has just opened up another arena right outside of town that's open to the youth. I don't know if people realize exactly how much programming we have up there for our community and in general for the youth. Donnie Smith has opened an arena that's for youth rodeos. There's a bicycle race up there yearly. There's just a lot of things going on up there that are positive. Senator Brock thought it was in our interest to get some money allocated to us. Because of the entanglements of the issues involved, some of that money's already been spent on engineering with no solution readily at hand. So, I'm just asking you, from the bottom of my heart, and 200 other people to start with, to make a motion to form this committee. I know I have talked to my mayor about it, and he says it's a welcome idea, and one that he would like to entertain with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heimow. You know, Love Valley is a unique attribute for Aridale County. I don't think there's many communities like that across this country that can provide such a unique experience for folks who enjoy riding horses and indeed, not only visiting, but living in that community. It is a very difficult issue, as you know, relative to state regulations and the tier system. A lot of things come into play that seem to have put roadblocks in front of us as we've tried to negotiate through this for the last two years. So, you have a willing partner in terms of the county, in terms of trying to find some solution that's out of the box and that can address the underlying sewer issues and enable the town to be able to have the businesses open that it needs to, to be able to support these community weekend events. We have a task force. We have commissioners assigned to different task forces that work in specific areas, and we do have a public health and well-being task force that's in their lane to try to figure out where do we go from here. So, we are willing, more than willing, I believe, to engage, to continue to engage, because I know that we've been working with our health department and the state to try to figure out how to address these issues, and there hasn't been a terribly easy answer. But we're willing to see if we can't square the circle somehow.
May I speak? With the objective of furthering this, whom would I speak to to make this more of a reality? And one of the reasons I believe that a subcommittee is important, and I'm going to be blunt, and this is probably why the town council doesn't always want me to represent them, but should more money come into this picture, I would like a committee that is actually a formal committee that will help in the oversight of the expenditure of this money. There have been a lot of allocations in the past, whether they are true or false, about money that has been misspent. We cannot allow that to ever happen again. Our town needs to be run like a town, and we do require your help. And in order for us to seriously go after money, people need to know the money they're giving us is being watched, you know, by us and by other people. So, that's why I'm asking for this committee. And if it's possible, would I go to Mr. Smith to discuss it further, or?
He would be the single belly button to push as far as being able to coordinate among the commissioners about who and how, and who are the stakeholders that need to be around the table to work through this issue? And our Health and Wellbeing Task Force is, we've got two commissioners, the Commissioner Norman, as well as Vice Chairman Bowles, that work on that task force assiduously every month in some form or fashion. And I know that we can convene a process. I don't know, you may want to speak to it, and how to go forward from here.
We'd just have to wait and talk about it.
Well, why don't you coordinate with Mr. Smith, and then we will get together the appropriate folks and expand the circle as necessary.
Thank you.
To get everybody. to get everybody at the table that can hopefully bring to bear some insights to be able to solve this problem.
Thank you very much. Thank you for listening to me. Mr. Smith, I will contact you via my internet. And, you know, to be quite frank, I don't even know who our town council's going to be tomorrow. God bless you guys. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I think polls just closed, so I think you can probably count the votes in Love Valley in about a minute and a half.
Why not?
Thank you, Mr. Heimer. Okay, we'll now move on to item seven, public hearings. Our first public hearing relates to a request from ICATS, which is requesting a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2019 Public Transportation Program Resolution. And I have Mr. Bradley Johnson, who is the ICATS director, who's going to tee this up for us.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, the request that ICATS has before you is a required public hearing for the state and federal transportation grants for Aridale County. It's a requirement of the commissioners to adopt a resolution authorizing myself, as the transportation director of Aridale County, to be able to apply for state and federal grant funding on the behalf of the county. ICATS grant request is a mixture of urban and rural operating and capital funds. ICATS is required to allocate costs depending upon the area that the trip is intended to serve. Money cannot be moved from urban to rural funding. ICATS Finance has done a wonderful job with creating a completely new set of accounts that allows ICATS to report accurate information without hours and hours of backend work. With their help, ICATS can manage a very complicated tracking system of expenditures between urban and rural areas of the county. An example of that would be if you purchased three buses, two of the buses would have to be purchased with urban funds, one of the buses would have to be purchased with rural funds, and then any maintenance for that vehicle would have to come from funds from the appropriate area. ICATS, or Aridale County, became part of the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization after the 2010 census, due to part of the Charlotte urbanized area extending into Aridale County. Urbanized federal funds are distributed from the FTA to the direct recipient for the urbanized area. CATS, Charlotte Area Transit, is the direct recipient of the urbanized area. This means that CATS has to approve any use of the urbanized money, and the money allocated to any other system in the urbanized area is less money for themselves. Urbanized funds are earned via formula that include revenue miles, population, and population ICATS is behind in the urban rural cost or capital allocation process due to not having access to urban funds in the past. All ICATS' capital assets have been purchased with rural money. ICATS has been increasing the urbanized allocation since 2010, but has been unable to access any of the funds due to CATS unwillingness to administer the oversight. In FY '17, ICATS was awarded the first urbanized transportation grant through CATS. The amount awarded for FY '17 was less than 20% of the amount that ICATS earned for the urbanized area. Last year, ICATS provided 120,000 trips to the citizens of Aridale County, covering 768,000 miles. Out of the $777,000 awarded to ICATS in FY '17, only 126,000 were urbanized funds. One of the requirements for the grant application process is to have a five-year approved budget by NCDOT and FTA. ICATS has completed that budget template and has identified the system's needs throughout FY '20 and '21. In order to keep ICATS growing with the transportation demands of Aridale County, ICATS would like permission to apply for the noted grants. Operating grants totaling $816,000, administrative grants for $231,000, and capital grants of $1.3 million. The total local match for the combined grants would be $573,000. The local match would have to come from revenue generated by ICATS and the allotted rope funding from NCDOT. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for Mr. Johnson?
So we are a huge generator of tax dollars for Charlotte, basically.
You know, you told us in the pre-agenda that the compensation, the difference between rural, a rural mile and an urban mile, even though they're the same distance, according to the federal government, if you're a urban area, you get compensated, or ought to be compensated, 40 cents per mile. And if you're in a rural area, you get four cents a mile. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So literally, along Shelton Avenue, on one side, it's rural; on the other side, it's urban.
Correct. And then from the area between Barium Springs and Statesville, that area jumps back into the rural area. So, you know, traveling along that same road, you're getting 40 cents a mile at one point, and then four cents a mile at the other, so.
Only the federal government could design a system of grant funding algorithms as bizarre as this. You know, Mr. Heimer earlier mentioned a little bit about Tier Three, and what does that mean? Well, that means that, as a county, we are at a disadvantage to other counties who are Tier Two or Tier One, who may not be as blessed as we are in terms of economic development and general state of the economy, and they need assistance. But the way that the government seems to want to provide assistance to communities that need assistance and help is to take funding away from other communities, as opposed to taking it out of a general fund and allocating it appropriately. So in Aridale County, we have tremendous difference, obviously, between Love Valley and Mount Moore, or Lake Norman and Hunting Creek. So two different worlds in terms of economic and cultural models. And it's frustrating to not be at the same competitive level for funding from the state to be able to provide us assistance in recruiting industry, as well as getting funding for communities that, right across the county line, if Love Valley was sitting in Alexander County or Wilkes County, it would have no problem receiving the funds to be able to deal with their issues, or a good portion of those issues. So this is another, this is a federal-level formula that has put us at a disadvantage in terms of generating dollars that we, that go to the CATS out of the Charlotte Area Transportation System, which basically is supposed to funnel dollars to ICATS, because we're part of their urban region. And we're not able just to do this on our own. We've got to affiliate. But because we affiliate in order to qualify, it's up to the Charlotte Area Transportation System, or CRTPO, or some entity that determines what our allocation is. And getting, you know, less than a 20-cent dividend on the dollars that we generate for those organizations just seems to be wholly out of whack. It's interesting to note that the ridership has gone in ICATS from FY '16 was just shy of 80,000, and in FY '17 had jumped to 117,000. That's more than a 40% increase in ridership. We didn't get a 40% increase in funding. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay. So these are some issues that we're going to need some help from our legislative teams to help to provide some redress for, to be able to provide the level of services for the tax dollars that Aridale County citizens are paying, the state, and to the federal government, so that we can get an equitable share of those dollars back to service communities that are in need, and individuals in need. So.
I think the irony of this is, is that we don't have the transportation funding to bus our homeless to Mecklenburg so they can use our money they took from us for them down there. That's the sad part.
Mr. Johnson, lead me through this. Walk me through this again. We apply for the grant. We win the grant. They administer the grant. They glean off 80% and give us the 20.
Yes.
Correct. It's, the allocation is based upon the three factors there. So the money is allocated to the, your UZA, your urbanized area, and then it's up to an agreement between the entities that are in that area to have a formula for how that money is going to be distributed.
Yeah, that's got to be changed. I mean, that's, Tier Three, that's in the rearview mirror. That's governmental extortionism, that is.
So, well, we appreciate you shedding some light on the Byzantine rules that have produced this inadequate and disparate disposition of funding. Because, you know, we're all North Carolinians, and folks that are in need of transportation in Aridale County have no less need than those who are in Mecklenburg County, or, as was noted by Mr. Heimer, for folks that are just across county line, because they live in a rural area. So because we have a kind of a split between rural and suburban and urban, we don't fit in anybody's formula. We're not a rural county, and we're not a urban county. But we get all the rules applied to us, it seems, in whatever way produces the negative result.
That's very correct. And one of the things that we just recently found in one of our state audits is that our vehicles do not say "public transportation" on them. So we have to put "public transportation" on all of our vehicles. But if you go to Charlotte, none of their vehicles say "public transportation," because it's a known, you know, entity that, or the known fact that you can get on their bus is general public. So we have to abide by the community transportation programs, but then also the large urban programs, so that we can get a little bit of money from both.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we conduct a public hearing, and then after that, that we adopt the 2019 Transportation Program Resolution.
Okay, so the request would be to conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of the program resolution in the November 21st meeting. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, actually, the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, you're asking to...
Conduct it tonight.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually need to open it. Okay, well, thank you for the outline. At this time, we will open the public hearing to consider adoption of the 2019 Public Transportation Program Resolution. And signed up, we have, looks like Denise Howard, nurse practitioner, from Statesville Family Medicine.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Dr. Denise Howard. I'm a primary care provider and nurse practitioner at Statesville Family Medicine, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our patients. 58% of our patients are self-pay or uninsured. A lot of our patients are experiencing some social determinants of health, which is transportation problems to get to their appointments. Hence, they will end up in the emergency room and have a bill that they can't pay at Davis or Aridale, so they end up with bad debt. But I think, too, in helping expand ICATS, that, from what I understand from Mr. Johnson, is that that would increase some of the transportation problems our patients, or barriers our patients are having in getting to their appointments. We've had patients to walk 45 minutes with a walker to get to their appointments, and that's because they don't have transportation to get there. They rely on other people bringing them, our cabs, some of the providers. Our staff have paid out of pocket for patients to come or get back home, rather than come, but to get back home when we find out they've walked to their appointments and they live a long distance. We've even had patients to say that they could walk to the emergency room instead of calling 911 because of their self-pay and they don't have the funds to pay the medics. So anything that would help with public transportation for Aridale County and for our patients, especially in South Statesville, in that area, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Howard. Now call Connie Darnell.
Didn't plan to speak tonight, but thank you, and ditto what she says. Also, one need that we see in the community is having a bus system that people could get on and off of, like they do in Charlotte. And Brad's got a very good plan for a 50-minute loop, five days a week, if the funding were available. And another challenge that I hear is that we need bus stops. And if anything that the county could do to accommodate that, and I know that's probably off the subject from the grant, but hopefully it applies. We've had a lot of people that got hit by cars and things like that because they're walking on streets without sidewalks, and if they had a loop that they could get on, I think that would help greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnell. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Seeing your hearing none, close the public meeting. And I'll ask, are there any further points of discussion? Or entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll again make the motion that we approve the 2019 resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Ron, do we need to read the resolution into the record?
I don't think so. Bradley, do we need to read it? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, the second item for public hearing is a request from the planning department to conduct a public hearing to consider a request, number 1710-1, from Alan Demansk, to rezone approximately .8 acres on Mecklenburg Highway from residential agricultural to residential office. Mr. Todd?
Good evening to the board. This rezoner request is outlined in blue on the screen. It's currently zoned RA. The request is to rezone to RO, which is residential office. Staff does support this request based on the land use plan calls for medium density, which does allow for neighborhood-scale commercial uses. The lot is located near similar uses and other non-residential uses. We support the use of existing residents for commercial use in the RO district, and traffic impact should not exceed RO capacity. Planning Board did vote 7-0 in favor of this request. Again, you can see it on the map, currently zoned RA. You've got some other commercial zoning to the north. This is the land use plan, showing the medium-density residential, which does allow, again, neighborhood-scale commercial uses. You've got Davidson's jurisdiction directly across the road. This is an aerial photo of the property, showing the existing house that's on it, along with some other adjacent residential uses. You've got a church, and then some other commercial uses in the area. This is looking directly at the property, the existing house, that is proposed to be used for an office space. Looking north, the site's on our right. Another image of the property with some of the surround. Another image of the property with some of the surrounding buildings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this request. We, we have not received, heard any opposition in regard to this request.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Are there any questions for Mr. Todd? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. There's one person that's signed up, Mr. Demask, the applicant, I believe. Anything to add to Mr. Todd's? Just here, do you have any questions, commissioners? Any questions of the applicant? I don't believe so. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demask. I would inquire if anyone else would like to be heard. Hearing and seeing none, close this public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, since we have no opposition to this rezoning request, I'd like to make the motion tonight, instead of waiting to our next meeting, to approve the rezoning map amendment and make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because the plan allows the neighborhood-scale commercial, and there are low, low-intensity commercial uses in the area.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven-point-three, is another request from the Planning and Development Board to continue a public hearing to consider a rezoning request from Tiramore Development. This matter was before us three weeks ago. We had a public hearing, and it has been continued to today to get additional information. Mr. Todd?
I'll just review the case real quick. The property, again, is outlined in blue on the screen, just under two acres. The land use plan does have a commercial node at the intersection of Shears and Rocky River, and properties adjacent to some retail uses that are directly across the road. The Planning Board did vote five to two in favor of the request. And again, you can see on the map, the property across is Town of Mooresville's jurisdiction. The neighborhood business was rezoned by the county back in 2012, and then you've got the residential, newer residential development in green that is also with the Town of Mooresville. That's the map showing the rural commercial node at the intersection, which the property falls within. And then again, an aerial of the property where you can see the commercial uses in the area, even though they don't have commercial zoning, they are grandfathered in. And then also, again, the commercial uses directly across. Then also shows all the residential, residential uses in the area. A few pictures of the site, again, the site's to our left with Food Lion and the commercial businesses across the road on the right. Looking directly across the road. And again, staff does support this request. I know the applicant has several individuals here that can probably provide some more detail and answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Okay, at this time, any, any questions for Mr. Todd?
Mr. Todd, you have reviewed that traffic impact analysis. Do you find it to be accurate, maybe is a better word?
With our, with our understanding of it, I think so. In looking at the proposed use, I mean, you're looking at a use that will probably generate minimal traffic, just with an NV zoning, you know, a, a two-acre lot or less. You know, I think to, to trigger anything more as far as improvements, I mean, you'd have to look at some type of use that's going to generate a lot more traffic. And if that was to happen on this property, it could potentially trip some additional requirements. But based on what was submitted, it does seem to be accurate.
I mean, after I read that report, I, I kept thinking about, well, what would three or four more deck chairs on the Titanic really matter? And I think that's the way that report, to me, was read. It's, it's already, it's already a mess, so we're not going to make it a much more bigger mess. It's just going to be a mess.
And, and the key to remember is with, with those studies is you can't hold the one property responsible for the mess that's already there. They can only be held accountable for any additional traffic that they're going to cause.
So, they're, they're really only responsible for the extra deck chairs, not the whole, not all the deck chairs or the boat?
Correct.
Got you. All right.
All right, any further questions, comments? All right. This time, I will open the public hearing, and we have several folks that have signed up. Begin with Mr. Bill Boyko. If you could come up, if you'd, just please announce your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Bill Boyko, and I live at 117 Alborn Drive, Mooresville, North Carolina, 28115.
Thank you.
I'm a resident and the vice president of the Curtis Pond Phases Two, Three, and Four HOA community. I am here on behalf of five-hundred-and-seventy homes that are in our HOA, and please ask not to rezone this property in question, from residential to commercial. There are already two Dollar General stores in the 28115 zip code. One is approximately nine miles away, and the other's approximately eleven miles away. There's also a Walmart Neighborhood Market approximately six minutes away from this location. Besides that, the intersection of Rocky River and Shears Road is a dangerous location. It is hard enough during certain hours of the day to travel that area without fearing, fearing one would get into a car accident. I have personally seen accidents, too many accidents in the last two and a half years in that location. For many of our, many in our area, that is the only way in or out of that section of Mooresville, to get to I-77, to either travel north up to 150, to the retail establishments there, or to go south into Cornelius, Huntersville, or Charlotte. Zoning this location as a commercial property is going to cause more harm than good. This property would be better used by the Town of Mooresville if brought into the Mooresville's jurisdiction. This could also impact people's jobs. Food Lion is a main source of income to many residents in the area, and they rely on that money. Putting a Dollar General or any other type of grocery retail establishment directly across from it could harm the store's profits and possibly force them to let workers go. When that happens, people lose their homes, and we could lose great neighbors. I know Dollar General is looking to buy land all over the area, and I do know there is a lot of opposition for this not to happen. I also understand that developer wanted a residential piece of land rezoned to commercial that is currently for sale right now, down the road from this location, which is in the Mooresville's jurisdiction, but the town board denied it. We currently have four hundred signatures on an online, over four hundred signatures on an online petition. Almost everyone who left a comment feels that the traffic will be an issue. We live here, we know what the traffic is like. There are also stated that they do not want a single standalone store like a Dollar General. They all mentioned that if anything could be put there, they would like a mixed, mixed use to give the residents of the area more options, as far as coffee shops, more restaurants, bakeries, et cetera. With our five-hundred-and-seventy homes in Curtis Pond Phases Two, Three, and Four, and the hundreds of homes in the surrounding HOA and non-HOA communities, alone, we can make a difference in not just what we want in our community, but who we want to run it. Knowing that the county board seats, that there are three county board seats up for reelection next year, we ask you to listen to what the people want that live in the area, and not what you think is good for what you guys request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyko. Moving on, I have Mr. Tom Hodges, and also, I believe, it's Rob Brown and Chris Kralheim, all
On behalf of the applicant, yes. Good evening, commissioners. Actually, this is our third time here, before you recall. We started this back in August. So, good to see you all again. We've had, you know, obviously, three delays on this, and we're here the third time before you, asking for approval tonight. Not to, you know, discredit this gentleman's information he has, but my client has not applied anything in the Town of Mooresville and been denied. We just confirmed that. They handle this region, and so that was not our client, maybe another developer for another retailer. But we're here tonight to answer any more questions you may have. We went over the traffic analysis we submitted to you, actually, two meetings ago, and then again, last meeting. Edith Davenport, Edith Peters with Davenport is actually the one that prepared that report. She's here to answer any questions you may have, as we had additional traffic questions that came up at last meeting. But we're here for you to ask your support for this project, and we have done everything that the board has asked us to do during these last sixty days of continuance. We have reached out to the Town of Mooresville on numerous occasions and tried to get cooperation from them, and have not received any with regard to the issues that were addressed at our first meeting before you. So, my client has done everything you've asked, and so we're here before you tonight asking for approval of this project.
Yeah, Tom Hodges, Tiramore Development. Sorry, I couldn't be here last time. I mean, my wife are having a baby, which is not something you can take a rain check on, so apologies for that. Yeah, just to echo what Rob's saying, you know, we're trying to cooperate with all parties involved. You know, I, I, at this point, me personally, I don't know what else we could do. We've reached out to the city. We want to meet with them and talk to them. You know, we've, we've, you know, dressed the building up, you know, well above code. We're well above code in, in a lot of different areas on the site with curb and gutter and things like that. So, you know, we are, we are up against the gun here on our contract timelines. You know, we did not anticipate a sixty-day delay. Of course, we want to make it work as much as we can, but we're at a point now of, you know, we're, we're, we're up against the wall in terms of contract timeline and our project timeline to be able to complete this in the timeline that we promised our client that we would. And so, anyway, I'm here for any questions regarding the development. I'm sure Edith would love to talk about the traffic analysis until you guys are bored and asleep, but any other questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions?
I guess the, the biggest concern I got here in this situation is, is there's a good chance we're going to release ETJ, the surrounding lots that are at it. And we're going to have one lot in the middle that may not resemble the other lots around it, or any of the other developments around it. And that, that bothers me, I guess, to a point, because this is probably not going to fall under Mooresville's zoning jurisdiction till y'all can get your building permit and get moving, and y'all are very adequate at building. Y'all can probably have the thing up by the time they get it in a couple weeks, if the weather works for you. And, and that's, that's the biggest drawback I got right now. If, if there was some way or another we could work with the city of Mooresville on this, I think that would be a huge plus for everybody, the community, and y'all, too, as far as making something look aesthetically pleasing, not different or, or standing out.
In terms of the, the development itself, like I mentioned, we are above and beyond what, what code would require. We're willing to, you know, I think this is a straight rezoning, so it's not a conditional thing, but we've got to come back before you guys. If we make promises here, we're going to keep them. And so, you know, what we did really, and our architect in our company is actually here present tonight as well, we mirrored the, the architecture of this building to the, the Food Lion and the Sea Store right across the street. And we, we took pictures of that, and we gave it to the architect, said, hey, make it look just like this. So, I really don't think, I mean, our intent, generally speaking, was to make it look just like the architecture across the street there. So, outside of the building, I think we'd be talking about things like, you know
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. And we're, we're willing to work with those things. And i- if, if we're going to apply, I think we have to go through the site plan approval process, too. If there's going to be sidewalks connecting throughout this development on each side of us, of course, we're willing to do that. You know, if we didn't budget for it, but we, you know, because we didn't anticipate the ETJ when we initially came in, sort of a little bit caught in the crossfire there, but we were, were obviously willing to, to do that, but we're working some serious time constraints. We've reached out to the city of Mooresville numerous times to try to set up a meeting, I think
Chris McNeil, we, we sympathize with, with your exact concern, and that's what the sixty days was for, was for us to get cooperation from the city, find out what they want, and what we can do to, to accommodate that, to address this issue that you brought up, but we received nothing from them, except an email communication that said, we're not going to talk about this. I've had phone conversations, I've talked with, I know they're not city councilmen, they're town commissioners. Even had recent conversations today, and they're basically just saying hands off of it. So, we made every attempt. My client is, 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 was willing to do that on numerous occasions, even up to the last hour, and, and we received no communication back in that regard.
And, and the, and the building upgrades and curb and gutter and things like that, those were done before we were ever asked, and we just wanted it to fit in with the character of the area anyway. So, if there's some other, you know, minor things we can do to, to blend in better, we're, we're willing to do that.
Just to clarify something, the, all the properties, to include yours, are subject to the ETJ request by Mooresville that is before us later this evening. I do want to thank you for the good faith efforts that you've made to engage with the Town of Mooresville planning staff, to be able to get some guidance on some specifics as far as what they would be looking for. And I know that's been frustrating, that, that haven't felt like they could participate based on advice of council, that they couldn't commit to anything unless they were actually applying their rules to property that was actually in their ETJ or having been annexed. So, we appreciate the fact that you went the extra mile to try to address those issues, and have addressed many of them in terms of the aesthetic appearance and, and all that. But I think what they're, they're focused on, sort of ties into other concerns about having numerous driveway cuts, is being able to have fewer cuts across a larger group of lots or, or developed businesses. And of course, you're the first one there, so you, you get the cut, I would imagine.
And we'll have to apply to DOT, who, who may very well make us have stub out to the adjacent property. Edith could probably hit on that as well, if you want some more information on how that process would go, but
The other issue, of course, that has been relay, raised is a very legitimate one, and one that's, you know, present in virtually all of these issues, related to transportation and the gridlock that's, you know, gradually got, got everybody in this area. Now, it's my understanding that the, the proposed east-west connector is going to come in somewhere around, you know, the Rocky River Road. That's what's the plan, and there'll be dramatic changes, I suspect, in all the road net in that area to accommodate that. I would ask, you know, there was some discussion last time we met about NCDOT potentially putting in a signalized intersection or stop signs or something. Have you heard anything on that?
Yeah, Edith's got that information. She wants to pop up here. We'll be happy to pop back up if you guys have questions for us as well.
Okay, well, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Edith Peters. I'm with Davenport. You got to read my very interesting report, I'm sure. As far as the signal in the, the intersection of Shears Road at Rocky River Road, and conversations I've had with John Cook, who's the district supervisor for NCDOT for Arndale and Alexander Counties for the Division Twelve, he has said that they've put in, as part of the SPOT five-point-oh prioritization process, for this intersection to become signalized. They're very aware that it is an issue currently, and it's something that they're taking strides to remedy. He and I did not talk specifically about this property, as it, it's just a, it was a discussion point when we were talking about other things in the neighborhood and the area. But he did, he did share that with me. They're looking at having it constructed in 2018 or 2019, the signal. So, that is their intention, and I have just kind of email correspondence about that, but I'm sure that if we needed, you know, John to send something directly to y'all, that he'd be happy to, but that is, that is the intention of NCDOT at this point. And if you have any other questions specific about the traffic study that, that you received or anything else that I can help with.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on the traffic study? We received the TIA in your packet, and one of our concerns with that was the fact that we don't have anybody on staff, no offense, Matthew, but we don't have anybody on staff that is actually a subject expert to analyze that TIA, and we don't to analyze that TIA. And we don't require a TIA, but still, you had a very interesting report, and we did read it. And to be quite frank with you, I have camped out over there. I mean, I, I got lots of calls on that intersection before the, any development, ten or more even come to the table here. We're in the process, and have been in the process for a little over a year of working out, you know, some things with the municipalities where we can get some planned growth in that area and what would be the best vehicle to take us there in. But what we have found, even since your TIA analysis and the data that is in it, I noticed in there that most of the trips, the highest percentage of trips were coming from the north to the south. And that kind of perplexed me a little bit until we figured it a little bit closer. And that's got to be folks fleeing the Mountmore area at rush hour, trying to find a back road home. Because why would there be more trips going south than there were, would be coming north? But anyway. And with the DOT expansion of Faith Road adding the right turn lane, it has actually, in the past month, caused traffic stack because of the left turn lane can't get turned left on Rocky River Road. So I guess it's death by a thousand cuts there. You know, every time you do a little something to improve something, it bottlenecked it further on down the road. But the reality is that the numbers have got to drive that. As soon as the traffic numbers get to a point, then DOT will move forward with getting that light. Does anybody disagree with that line of thinking? But, but nevertheless, we got to get to that point, and it's going to be painful getting to that point. But I want, I don't want you to think we dismissed your TIA, because we didn't, we read it, and we analyzed your data and stuff, we looked at it, as best we could do, because we're not experts in the subject matter of traffic management either. But, but nevertheless, yes, that, there's no doubt it's bad in there, and it's probably going to get a little worse before it's corrected. But I believe correction is on the way. But nobody knows when, and nobody knows, you know, funding drives everything. As far as the east-west connector, it, it hasn't been, it's been drawn, but it has, no right-of-ways have been acquired, no funding has been assigned to it. That's a long ways away on an east-west connector, in my personal opinion. But, but nevertheless, I, I appreciate the fact of your, your due diligence in that TIA, because it had a lot of valuable information in it. And, and it was easy to sit there at that intersection and watch all that stuff go on, because your numbers, I can see exactly where you got those. I mean, I had no problem believing your TIA. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, just for your benefit, I am a professional engineer. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, licensed with the state of North Carolina. And I do regularly do TIAs in the town of Mooresville. And I've, I'm accredited, or not accredited, but I'm on the pre-qualification list with North Carolina Congestion DOT, congestion management, as well as the town of Mooresville. So if that gives you some, you know, comfort in knowing, you know, they, they regularly review and approve my work. But I understand that it's not your area of expertise, so. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Maybe you can take a look at that traffic circle from that diversion diamond over there.
I drove through it tonight. It's quite, it's quite interesting, under construction right now.
We could always put one of those down there, and then everybody'd really be happy.
Any further questions for Ms. Peters? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that exhausts everyone that had signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Okay, we got two. If you'll please just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's William Brynek. My wife Sarah and I have lived at 1352 Shears Road since 1978. We have the adjoining property just south of the, of the one in question here. We live right here. I have sent numerous emails to all commissioners, and I'm not going to go over everything that we've been through before, but one thing that's not been said about any of the traffic at all is that there are two edges from the shopping center. One's here, the other one is right here. So this new store is going to have another driveway directly across the street opposing two edges from the Food Lion Shopping Center. And quite frankly, we've lived there a lot of time, and, and just to reiterate what the man from Curtis Pond said, it's going to have a major impact on Shears Road traffic, really major. Because anybody coming out of here is going to drop, stop somebody here and here, and not to mention the traffic coming out of Rocky River. And granted, you know, coming southbound from Mountmore and all, that, that is a problem. But if my wife and I try to walk across to the Food Lion on a weeknight, anywhere between 4:30 and 5 o'clock, you might as well take the car, because you're going to get run over. And it's not, it's not something that's intermittent or anything like that. It's predictable. It happens every day, especially on Fridays. Just the position of it is, is going to cause a great problem in the area. I had one other issue, and I don't know if it's, if, if I'm talking out of turn here at first, but I wanted to get back to the catch pond. I imagine that whether, whether this property is going to be under Mooresville's jurisdiction or Iredell County, it's still going to have to have a catch pond for the parking lot. In other words, whether they hook to a sewer and water, or whether they have a well, or whatever. We're, the adjacent properties, our property as well as the property to the, directly to the north, this property right here, we both have wells. Theirs is right about here, ours is right about here. A catch pond is going to be in here. Now, whether it's a, a retention pond or a detention pond, it's going to have to have an outlet. It's going to, water's going to come out of that when it rains. A retention pond has water in it all the time. A detention pond drains at a controlled rate. This property, as well as our property, are higher in elevation than this property. And my question would be, where's the drainage water going when it does come out of the pond? Not to mention problems with mosquitoes, things like that. It's just something that they're going to have to have no matter what. I'd like to find out about, you know, see what would happen there. And I may be a little behind the times, but I talked to the assistant district supervisor on September the 1st about the traffic analysis. And to his knowledge, there has not been any traffic analysis that was sanctioned by the county or the state DOT in this area since the Food Lion Shopping Center was, was put in. So apparently, it must have been done before that, or it's a traffic analysis that's not sanctioned by the state. I think that's all I have to say, but I just wanted to reiterate the traffic problem in the area. And along with the, along with the driveway, you know, it should be some kind of a controlled access to Shears Road. We have like three, four properties right there. And granted, if each individual property has its own exit onto Shears Road, that's just going to compound the problem. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. I think I saw, yes, ma'am. You want to come up?
My name is Melissa Kratz. I live at 211 Elba Drive in Mooresville in Curtis Pond, 234. But that's not why I'm here. I came just to kind of find out what was going on in reference to the potential rezoning of this lot. A few things kind of had come up tonight that I've heard spoken about. I'm also a real estate agent with Caldwell Banker. The gentleman that were up earlier saying that they had never requested from the town of Mooresville to rezone the land. What had actually happened was, back in January of 2017, their company via an agent, Jessica Jackson, submitted an offer to purchase of the land that's on the corner of Faith and Shears, that is 1176 Shears Road. We were very close to coming to final negotiations on that. And when, at the last point of it, Jessica had called the town of Mooresville, spoke to Craig Culbertson, who I had been in regular contact with about the land. When they put the brakes on it with the town of Mooresville, that's kind of how it ended. It wasn't that it was formally requested. I have spoken with the town of Mooresville, Craig Culbertson, and the director of the planning department as well, on numerous occasions, and as recent as last week, trying to find another way, because I have heard through my community that they were against, you know, putting it in this particular location. It was my understanding in speaking with Jessica Jackson as, as of late of last week, that there was a possibility, there still may be interest, that they had liked that lot better. Now, I am the listing agent for that, and I need you to know that, and I'm not partial to this, but there was a little bit more to the story. They will not rezone that land according to the town of Mooresville. They've stated they want to keep it more residential, and I understand that. But putting it in this location, it's not only going to cause distress by the people that live in the community, but there's also extra traffic that I don't think was talked about tonight that is a concern. I apologize, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but if you go just a little bit further north on Shears Road, Green Acres Road there, that has been purchased, and Eastwood Homes is building a community back there. They have a great, I believe it's about 34-point-something acres that they're developing. So there's going to be a tremendous amount of additional traffic brought in in the next, you know, couple of months, starting once they start building homes, and then continuing from there. In my conversation the other day with the town of Mooresville, we were talking about some things. And there's also some additional land that is being looked at, and it's in the process of being possibly purchased, and that's down Faith Road, just, just west of the corner of Faith and Shears, but to the east of Black Angus Lane in the back there. That is also being looked at to be rezo, not rezone, but made into a residential type of neighborhood. There's a great deal of land in that, which is going to create even more traffic. So even though it already is stressful for people to drive there, we have a lot coming in that is already planned for, just with the Eastwood Homes community, and what's in the works on the other side that I just mentioned. I'm not for or against the store. I, I really, you know, it's, it's more about the big picture. It's also been mentioned, Bill had mentioned it from other residents, but I've heard it from people myself. They're looking for a certain feel to come to that area, and with such a small area being a potential for commercial, because that was the other thing that town of Mooresville had mentioned to me, was that they weren't going to just allow that whole road to be changed over from residential. So they had only allocated a small area to have additional commercial property there. So we have a very small area, a very small window of opportunity to set the tone of what is there. Whether it's this store or something else, I think the residents should have a right to be heard on it. But that's all I wanted to add, and thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Was it Cross? Did I hear?
No, Kratz. K-R-A-T-Z. Melissa Kratz.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kratz.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would desire to be heard? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close this public hearing and ask for any comment.
Mr. Chairman, I can't recall in the time I've sat in this seat where we have had so much research done on one rezone situation. I believe it has been, the due diligence period here has been very long. We've delayed this a couple of times, and we've researched. This is not something we're entering, entering into lightly. We're being asked this evening to, this piece of legislation says, "Do you want to rezone from RA to NB?" That's it. That's the question. Any and all uses in neighborhood business. So that's what we have to decide. And, and we've researched every avenue. There's no doubt about it. But with that said, Mr. Chairman, if nobody else has any comments, I would be prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Any further comments?
The only thing I will say in this is, is I feel like that Iredell County, we're not necessarily in the development business. We do have land plans, but we usually step aside and refer to the municipalities when it comes time, when it's in their jurisdiction. This should have been in Mooresville's jurisdiction. Lack of air, foresight, or whatever, it's not. Maybe that can't be corrected, or maybe it can. I hope later it can. So for that fact, I, I, this, this has given me heartburn all the way through, for, I think it's kind of almost a technicality that has been uncovered that was not taken care of.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner McNeely. Any further comments? There's motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Bowles.
Could I read that in its entirety?
Yes, please.
I'd like to, if you don't mind. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adoption of the 2030 Horizon Plan. And that said, approval is reasonable and in the public's interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it is within the rural commercial designation, and it's adjacent to the commercial zone properties already.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Four to one, the motion passes. And so, thank you very much. And we appreciate everyone that has shared their concerns, because we share those concerns. And we also appreciate staff for working to try to resolve a lot of these difficult issues and try to get the best result. As Commissioner McNeely has said, we're sort of betwixt and between on this relative to property that lies within Mooresville's appropriate ETJ and ought to be developed according to their standards. And, but we have to base our decisions on county requirements. And we'll see what happens. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move on to administrative matters in item eight, excluding item 8.1, 8.9, and 8.10. Mr. Smith, if you could please summarize the remaining items that have been considered for the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item 8.2 is a request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 to accept and appropriate an additional $17,000 and the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Level 2 funding to Barium Springs Task, which is the Treatment Alternatives for Sexualized Kids Program. Item 8.3 is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a three-year consulting services agreement with MGT of America, and this is for $7,700 annually. This is a requirement through the Department of Health and Human Services to analyze our indirect costs. Item 8.4, a request from the Finance Department for approval of a three-year lease renewal with Partners' Behavioral Health for space at the Health Department complex on Highway 21. Item 8.5, a request from Finance to accept the high bid of $7,525 for 1226 Williams Road, Statesville, acquired through tax foreclosure and authorization to finalize the sale. 8.6, a request from the Finance Department for, for adoption of a resolution to sell property acquired through tax foreclosure and authorization for the purchasing and contracts manager to conduct an electronic auction on Gov. deals. 8.7, a request from Planning and Development to adopt a resolution of intent calling for the closure of Fern Valley Way and Moss Creek Way, and to set a public hearing to be held on December 5th, 2017. 8.8 is a request from Planning and Development to call for a public hearing on December 5th, 2017 regarding proposed text amendments to the Land Development Code. 8.11, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the October 17th, 2017 meeting. And as was added at the beginning of the meeting, item 8.12, this is to approve a resolution in support of Project Victory. And this has to deal with committing to work with the state of North Carolina to make a local match in the amount of 5% of the state's building reuse grant for Project Victory.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any further comment on any of these items? Is there a motion to approve, as outlined on the consent agenda, all of those items just announced by Mr. Smith?
Motion to approve, Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. A circling back to item 8.1, this is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13 for a $132,200 donation of land and buildings from the East Iredell Lions Club. And I would ask Michelle Hepler, if she could please come up and share with everyone a little bit about what's a great win-win opportunity for the community in East Iredell and the county and the Lions Club.
Good evening, everyone. So I have with me David Fitzgerald, who is- So I have with me David Fitzgerald, who is a member of and secretary of the East Iredal Lions Club. And as we presented to you at the pre-agenda meeting, I'd like to publicly acknowledge an exciting project that's being made possible by the donation of, a generous donation of the East Iredal Lions Club located, its property located at three thirty-six Riverhill Road. It's a total of eight acres and a community building that is two thousand two hundred and ninety-two square feet. The acceptance of this property would require some minor upgrades and work, including HVAC, gravel and driveway work, some tile removal and some new flooring, as well as cosmetic painting. But with these upgrades, it will allow the building to be opened as a community building, very similar to our Scotts Rosenwald Park, which was also a property that was donated and the county turned into a really nice facility for the community to use. And so at that point, or at this point, I would just entertain any questions or allow you guys to have comments if you have them.
Any comments?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Fitzgerald and Lions Club for their contribution and your asset to that community over all the years that you have been.
I'd just like to add, it's bittersweet. We appreciate this donation, but it also, at the same time, signifies probably the ending of a very valuable civic club to our community. My father was a lion out in West Iredal, and it's fading also, and it's sad to see that, but we do appreciate y'all. Thank y'all so much.
I may just say one word. The Lions Club has been, spent their time to support the community, and we feel like that this project is going to continue on what we were trying to do for the past fifty years.
Amen.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I would like to identify, too, just in the proposal donation, the only request that the Lions Club asked of us was that we consider naming the park after them, so it would be our hope to name the park the East Iredal Lions Club Community Park.
Mr. Fitzgerald, and, you know, we just, once again, want to thank you and the entire East Iredal Lions Club community for passing the baton to the county. We are eager to accept that, and we commit that we will take this property to the next level for the benefit of the community and in testament and a legacy to the work that you all have done for fifty years, and we will do you proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept this donation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We accept this donation with the caveat that we keep the name East Iredal Lions Club on the park.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. We now proceed to item eight point nine, which is a request from Planning and Development to render a decision in regards to a request to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of five parcels on Shears Road to the town of Mooresville. This matter actually relates back to the previous discussions we had concerning the rezoning of one of those five lots from the Tiramore Development Corporation. So, Mr. Todd, if you'd please share with us.
I'm about to stay out past my bedtime.
What do you mean?
The, I don't have much to share on this one, again, but the properties that are requested are hatched in blue. The property that was just rezoned is this one here, so the request does come around. It does leave these two parcels out of the request.
So I guess next time when we ask somebody to accept ETJ for all of the property that fronts across the street from the Food Line, we need to be specific not to leave a doughnut hole.
Correct.
Okay. We'll try to do a better job on that.
It's my understanding that, really, that this is a request from the town of Mooresville, and that to expedite this request, they were limited to five lots. Is that correct?
That's correct. The ordinance requires if it's over five lots that there's a different process, requiring them to do a public meeting. It lengthens out the process a little more on their end.
That's why we have a hole here.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Any questions?
My only concern is, you know, we had a meeting, I appreciate Commissioner Bowles attending on my behalf, with Mooresville on a continued ETJ discussion, and no one showed up from the town of Mooresville but a staff member, no elected officials or anything, and I felt offended by that had I been there. And on your behalf, as a general government task force member, I think it was rude to not show up. But my concern, as always with these ETJ requests moving forward, is until we have a mechanism that turns these properties back in our control, if the properties are not developed or used for the intended purposes people are wanting them, the ETJ is released for, or the rezonings rezoned for, I'm reluctant to do that. Typically, it's for water and sewer purposes, which Commissioner McNeely is right. You know, in the municipalities, these things are better done, you know, especially commercial corridors where the water and sewer is available and that kind of thing. But my concern is here, it was, in my opinion, it was done for whatever reason they did it. I'm not gonna, I don't know what reason they did it, and left a doughnut hole, but, you know, our discussions are continuing on future things, but, you know, we've asked the legislators to look at mechanisms to draw properties back into our jurisdiction if they're not used within a certain amount of time. So I sure, I just want to remind the board that that's a concern that we need to be considering for our constituents, because those people cannot hold, if we release ETJ in these areas until it's annexed, our voters hold us accountable for what the town, more members of Mooresville do, until they are Mooresville citizens. So I just want to remind this board, you know, we don't take any decision lightly, but that's one of our heartburns about releasing ETJ in the future because of recent activities this year that's been in this county, unintended consequences, be it that that was the case, because the economy downturns over the years passed. But still, until there's a mechanism in place to address the situation, we need to be concerned and ask the towns, in my opinion, for a timeline to run water and sewer or to do what they're wanting to do in these areas before we consider these ETJ releases.
Well, one thing I'll speak to that on is, the problems have been in the past usually developer-driven requests, and then they're like, oops, I'm not quite ready yet. The discussions we're having now are driven by the municipalities, and I truly believe that municipalities asking for the request of ETJ will do their job in zone. They will not be concerned whether the lots are going to sell or the subdivision's going to get finished in the way they want, whatever. They're going to take it and go with it. So I have faith in that. My faith may be misguided. I pray we'll see and find out and hope not.
Well, the faith in that is, the first good faith you should do is show up to a meeting you set with other elected officials in the county to discuss these situations, in my opinion, because our time is just as valuable as theirs. But having said that, understand things happen, people may have got a date wrong, but we set the meeting up at our date previously to that. But thank you again, Mr. Bowles, for going on my behalf, but that's, I understand what Commissioner McNeely's saying, but unless they have a specific timeframe they're wanting to run water and sewer there at this point, I don't particularly see the rush.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, they already have water and sewer.
They do.
They do it with Food Line, yeah.
Yeah, well, so it's there. Stub it across the room.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our attorney a question? Is it possible that any future ETJ releases, is there any way that we can put a condition on it that we will, that we, anything we release has to be a conditional use zoning when they assign their zoning to it?
Not unless it's in some sort of agreement with the town, as far as, an annexation agreement might deal with something like that, but you wouldn't make it a condition of the ETJ release.
Okay. I just think, obviously, when we're releasing ETJs in the path of progress at these intersections that are going commercial, and every hurdle that we have to jump here, it just needs some conditions on it. These straight-up zonings, any and all uses in that zoning designation could be anything. And I just think, and we have no way to put any conditions on it if it's straight-up zoning, so, and I just feel like at this particular point, we could have satisfied some of these problems if we could have put a few conditions on it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowles, I may have misunderstood you. Are you asking, were you asking that the town of Mooresville will be required to make them conditional if it's?
I'm saying, in the future, if we release ETJ.
Yes, sir.
Can we put any kind of a stipulation on it that when they assign their zoning, it has to be conditional use? Is that an intergovernmental agreement, or can we do it in the zoning ordinance, or what happens?
I, my initial reaction is no. I can look into whether or not there's some sort of agreement that would allow that, but
I can't see how.
But I think that becomes more of a policy issue for Mooresville and how they administer their zoning application.
So if we could influence the town of Mooresville electeds to put that in their policy, that if they accept ETJ from the county, it automatically is going to be conditional use?
I suppose you could have further discussions about that, yes, whether or not there's a true way to enforce that and require it.
On some of these zonings that we've looked at, where you've got just one parcel and it's surrounded by residential, you know, lighting turned toward the interior, screening, some of that thing, that's a big issue.
I will say, though, that most municipalities are more strict as far as requiring that anyhow, requiring the conditional process.
Okay. We can have that discussion later, as to see.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve releasing the ETJ to the town of Mooresville, because as I said before, I think it's the right thing to do.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I would note that this release includes the property that we, less than thirty minutes ago, rezoned, and it will go into Mooresville, who will have to assign their own zoning classification, which should be commensurate with the zoning that the county has at the time it goes into that jurisdiction, but which will then have to comply with all of Mooresville's requirements relative to sidewalks and appearance and all that.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, I think if they pull a zoning permit before Mooresville assigns zoning to it, it meets the county standards.
Yep.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item eight point one zero. This is a request from Planning and Development to make a decision in regards to a request to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of sixteen point one two four acres to the town of Mooresville.
Again, this one outlined in blue on the screen is next to Niagara Bottling. It's the sixteen acre tract, basically sandwiched in between Mooresville's jurisdiction.
We had some discussion about this last time around, and had a public hearing that was closed to allow some additional discussion and with folks that were from that neighborhood, and any additional comments concerning those engagements? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we release the zoning and the subdivision jurisdiction on the sixteen point one two four acres to the town of Mooresville.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Todd, it's just shy of, I guess, nine o'clock. So if you're having to get home for your beauty sleep, you're going to have to sleep a long time.
I need it, I need it. I heard laughter coming from somewhere about that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, item nine, which is announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have our boards and commissions now, instead of just popping up periodically, we're trying to get them all on a six-month rotational basis, and this is what's coming up for consideration in December. These are to be appointed by the end of December, I believe. I will just announce the number of vacancies for each commission or board, and encourage folks that if anything here strikes your fancy, that you would please visit the county website and get a description of the duties and the background of what those boards and commissions are involved in, because we depend very heavily on citizen involvement to bring to the table expertise and insight to be able to provide to our staff and to us recommendations about how to deal with all of these different issues and entities. There is an application process. Please fill that out and submit it to the county manager's office, and we will then entertain those at our, which meeting is it going to be, Mr. Smith?
Second meeting in December.
Second meeting in December.
Second in December, okay. So they have one vacancy for Carolina Partnership, one vacancy for the Charlotte Douglas International Airport, one vacancy for the Health Board, two vacancies for the Advisory Committee for Home and Community Care Block Grants, five vacancies for the Nursing Home Advisory Board, two vacancies on the Personnel Advisory Committee, four vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Committee, seven vacancies on the Transportation Advisory Committee, which ought to get everybody beaten on the door to work on that, and two vacancies on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So if you'll please consult the record and our website, more information will be on that for you to digest. We have no appointments to boards or commissions this evening, no unfinished business that I'm aware of. This is not a public comment period for general comment. Is there any new business? Item thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I have something brief. I've been able, Commissioner Norman and I are on the Education Task Force, and I've been able to talk with each of you other board members today, along with the sheriff and Chairman Page for the school system and Superintendent Brady Johnson. I'd like to just get a nod from you guys for, I'd like to have, Commissioner Norman and I would like to have a safety summit with the schools, their education task forces, and their board representatives, and report back to you guys some of the, you know, we'd like to proactively address some of the safety concerns, maybe at the schools in a proactive manner. With what's going on in our communities nationally, we'd a lot rather be proactive. Our school system had to make some tough cuts this year going into the school year, based on various factors that they deemed necessary to do that, but we've all gotten calls about and concerns from citizens about the lack of gate guards at the high schools. And so what I'd like to look at... And so what I'd like to look at is meet with these guys and see if we can figure out the necessity for a couple, two or three of these schools, and what the cost would be to fund them from potentially January one until the end of the school year, because I think it's a needed situation. And with your guys' approval, we'd like to set up that safety summit and get some revenue amounts, some reasons some of these positions may have been cut, and get back to this board to potentially consider funding those positions. And then that way, then next year, going into our retreat and our meetings with the school boards, we could make sure that those positions were adequately funded and/or addressed in their upcoming budget for next year.
Well, I certainly think that's a very worthwhile issue to explore, and it's certainly within the remit of the Education Task Force to engage with the relevant stakeholders. Any comment, other than generally supporting that line of discussion and inquiry?
Well, I think with, you know, with the actions that we've seen here lately across the United States, we don't want to be in the same situation if the Lord can help it.
Okay, I think you can take that as green light.
Yeah. I think so.
All right. County managers report. Mr. Smith?
I'm going to pass down a proposed agenda for our retreat on next Friday, the seventeenth. This is, this is something that I've talked about with the chairman so far, sent out a couple times, but I'll let, if you have anything else you'd like to add, it's kind of getting refined as we, as we go along. And you'll notice at the end, under four, item four, that we're going to talk about, it's labeled as open discussion, but one of the things I definitely want to talk about is school class size and what that, what kind of impact that's going to have on us this coming year, and just budget priorities in general. Yeah, we, we might as well go ahead and start the discussions after you've had a day of listening to us drone on about everything we need, which actually, I hope that that's not how this one comes across. So if you have any questions or comments or changes, let me know. Just FYI, we had a really interesting event happen here today. It was the fiftieth anniversary, or a session of the North Carolina Court of Appeals, celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, and it was in this room. The three-judge panel was up here at three of these seats, and I was, I actually heard one case. It was pretty short. I don't know how many they actually heard. But it was really interesting. It was a packed house, and Retha had high blood pressure all day, hoping they'd get done by five, but good event and very well attended. Parking over at the Hall of Justice, this is something we've been looking at really closely. We've opened up the, a parking lot at the corner of Harrell and Stockton Street where the house was that was purchased fairly recently. We gained about thirty spaces. I think that's going to hold us for a while, but we will monitor that as we go along. And we do have some other locations that we may use if, if necessary. And then finally, I attended a Mitchell Community College. It was basically a corporate, a corporate investment or investor event, but it was basically dealing with workforce development and, and some of the initiatives that this board, and in particular, the Education Task Force and Economic Development Task Force have been working on. And they've got two categories, pipeline categories and transitioned categories, and they can definitely explain those better than I can, but they have a focused fundraising effort that's going to go on to try and help to, to move this forward, and I think it's a testament to some of the, some of the work of this board, and it was actually mentioned at the meeting by, by Mitchell. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, we do have two items. We had a closed session after our pre-agenda meeting prior to the seven o'clock hour, where we discussed a item regarding property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one subsection A five. There was no action necessary to be taken on that matter. And we also had two items under economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one subsection A four. I believe that we can just entertain a motion without any further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on November the twenty-first, our next meeting at seven P.M., regarding an economic development incentive not to exceed $465,000 over a five-year period for Project Elsa, based on a minimum investment of $18 million in Iredal County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further comment or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Since I'm on the roll. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on November the twenty-first at seven P.M. regarding the, an amendment of a prior economic development incentive grant in the amount of $94,090 to be increased to $116,400 over a five-year period for an additional investment of 1.15 million, with a new total investment of $6 million in Iredal County by Matt Moldings.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else for the good of the order? Old hearts free?
I'd just like to do a shout-out real quick to ECOM and to EMS for both answering the call and sending the ambulance for my mother last night. Four or five different vehicles showed up at her house, a couple first responders, a fire truck and an ambulance, and they got her to the hospital, and there's all kind of activity going on, and, and we got in there and settled, and she said, "You think they sent all them people because you're a commissioner?" And I said, "No, Mom, I think they sent them because you needed help." So I appreciate all that come out and, and got her to the hospital, and she's doing fine. Hope to maybe get her out tomorrow. So anyway.
Just tell her she's in our prayers.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.
Adjourned.